Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for joining us today. We would hereby like to start and open the public hearing on the draft ECB guidance to banks on leveraged transactions. We have here on the panel Patrick Ami. He's the Deputy Director General of Microprudential Supervision One. And with him, four supervisors in his team, Jean Baptiste Chil, Jan Erich Volk, Ivan Stiliyanov, and Georg Paula. We would first, Patrick Ami will give a short presentation. And afterward, you are very much invited to ask questions. When you ask a question, please state your name and your affiliation. And I would ask you, in the first round at least, to limit your questions to two, as the president does with this press conferences. Thank you very much. I hand over.
Thank you very much, Yuta. Thank you very much. Welcome to all of you. Welcome in sunny Frankfurt. We are going to present a little bit of slides to introduce the topic. And of course, then thereafter, we are very happy to get questions and explain a little bit the rationale for the draft guidance. And I will share that presentation with colleagues, just to make it a bit more lively. Let's start with maybe directly with slide three, with the timeline of the public consultation, just to give a sense of timing and the next steps. So as you know, the public consultation was launched end of November last year. Today is the public hearing. And we will close the consultation period at the end of last week. We expect to receive a number of comments. We will analyze those comments. And we hope to be able to finalize the guidance by the end of the first half 2016, 2017, sorry. On the background and why we thought it important to come up with a draft guidance on leveraged finance. I think, just to remind, we started in 2015, thematic review on leveraged finance. We sought based on anecdotal evidence at that time that the market was developing very, very fast with some trends that we wanted to investigate further. So we started that thematic review, which was conducted in several phases. I think it's important to note that already we issued to individual banks that were -- is it better? Yeah. That were subject to the thematic review. We issued individual recommendations with specific timelines to address specific concerns or comments we had for each of those banks subject to the thematic review. So the draft guidance is complementing individual actions that are already being taken and being followed up in GSTs. Maybe just to concentrate on some of the main findings of our survey and thematic review, we had a very marked increase in volumes and transactions since 2012, with some features that you all know of, the trend towards covenant light transactions. And since we did the review, it did not, this trend did not reverse, on the contrary. And also, rather interesting features, in 2014, the volumes of new transactions were represented for more than a third of the new transactions with refinancing of existing transactions with higher leverage. So based on those different trends that we noted across the banks, we had, as I mentioned, individual follow-up. And we thought it would be important to come up with guidance to further steer more consistently the market. Also, having in mind that we are not the first in doing this. We had, prior to our interest in the subject, we had, as you know, guidance being published in the US. And so, US banks are already subject to a guidance that is very similar in intent and content to what we are trying to achieve here. I think it's important to mention that what we want to contribute to is smooth and stable financing of the economy over time. This guidance is not about restricting access to credits to corporates. And I want to make that very, very clear. Maybe if we move to the next slide. So just to remind that the guidance is expressing supervisory expectations. So this means that it is a non-binding instrument. It is not a regulation per se. However, deviations from the content of the guidance will be, of course, analyzed by the GSTs going forward and by the onsite inspections. And we will expect that banks explain material deviations from the guidance. The applicability of the guidance, it will be applied to all institutions supervised by the ECB. And however, we, of course, will expect that banks apply proportionality in applying this guidance. And we will ourselves apply proportionality, meaning that banks that have very few activity in terms of leveraged financing, of course, will not be expected to apply the guidance in the full level of detail. In terms of scope, we want to apply it to a consistently defined leveraged transaction universe. And however, some of the expectations in the guidance, we feel might be relevant for other types of activities or operations, like syndication activities, for instance, more broadly. The guidance itself addresses three key dimensions. As I mentioned, a definition, consistent definition. The second is considerations pertaining to underwriting and syndication. And the third is pertaining to risk monitoring and reporting IT tools. The guidance, as I mentioned as well, is closely aligned with the US guidance and other initiatives. And with the ECB draft guidance on non-performing exposures, we have some cases of deviation from the US guidance that we will present a little bit further in the slides. And I'm sure we will receive questions on those as well during this public hearing. Maybe I will give the floor to Jean Baptiste to start presenting a little bit more in detail the definition part of the guidance.
So, good afternoon, everyone. So, thank you, Patrick. As you mentioned, we've run a thematic review on 2015. And one of the findings was pertaining to the definition of leveraged transaction. And the finding we had is that between banks, the definition of a leveraged transaction was very different. And sometimes also within banks, they have some multiple and often competing definition of leveraged transaction. That's why we come up with a proposal and a preliminary definition of leveraged transaction that I'm going to go through quickly in the slides. So, the definition works pretty simply. You've got elements of inclusion and elements of exclusion. And the first and main elements of inclusion is a leverage test, where we actually look at the in-depth level of one borrower. And we assume that when his debt is more than four times its operating profit, this corporate borrower is leveraged and should be captured by our definition. And this four-time metric is something that is pretty common as a market practice and also align with the ratio that was in the US guidance. When it comes to the bottom part of the slide, so the exclusion, so we exclude, we have three main exclusions from the scope of leveraged transactions. So the one exclusion is related to the counterparty type. So we don't want to capture loans to private individuals. We don't want to capture a loan to public sector entities. The purpose of the guidance is not to have financial institution loan either. Then we've got a second type of exclusion, that is a kind of materiality threshold, so very small transaction, small being defined as below five million euro. I exclude it from the scope of exposure that we want to capture. And finally, we exclude also type of structured credit activities, meaning that what we want to focus in the guidance is rather on cash flow-based lending. And we exclude activities that are mostly asset-based. So asset-based lending is excluded, commercial real estate is excluded. As you will see on the right part of the slide, we've got some expectation in terms of what we want to see in the, as a feedback from every interested stakeholder in this public consultation. And what we are very keen on having is to have a kind of quantification of the exposure that would be captured by the guidance. So any type of quantitative information that you are able to provide us will be very helpful for us to size more precisely, even more, the effects of the definition. And when it comes to exclusions, you might have some question of the comprehensiveness of these exclusions. And on that particular point, we also welcomes detailed comments on why sometimes you will deem some other exclusion justified. So, moving now to the next slide, I will get a bit more in detail with the leverage So it's a very basic ratio that compares the level of debt with the EBITDA. The EBITDA, as per the current version of the guidance, is based on an adjusted metric. So I'm sure that we will get more in details concerning this unadjusted EBITDA. But something that is important to say at this stage is that it doesn't mean that as part of the covenant negotiation that you have with the borrower, you cannot use an adjusted EBITDA. It just means that for the purpose of reporting and for a very basic consistency reason, we think at this stage that an unadjusted EBITDA will be the more simple, the simplest way to have consistency in the bank that we are monitoring. When it comes to the second part of the ratio, the total debt, so we wanted to make clear that we are really speaking of total debt. So we don't, at this point in time, net the cash of one borrower for this calculation, in that we look at the commitment rather than only at the drawn part of the debt. So whenever there is an drawn line, we do expect at this stage that these hundred line, undrawn lines are included in the calculation. So I won't get into more details at this stage. Feel free to ask questions afterward after the presentation. And you will see again on the right side, the type of information that we are keen on receiving. So you might have some IT constraints when receiving and using EBITDA. Please let us know as part of the public consultation. And we have also one open question on the treatment of incremental debt when it comes to the debt calculation. So please feel free to give your thoughts on that and use, release this public consultation as a forum for discussion. So I give the floor to Ivan on the other aspect of the guidance.
Yes, thanks a lot. Good afternoon from me too. So on top of the definitional aspects, the guidance also raises expectations which relate to risk management across several points of attention which we identified as part of the thematic review. So here, in any case, given the results of the review, we are confident that some of these aspects are already in place in some of the banks. But we have not seen the consistency which we would like to, and we have not seen them as common practice. And that's why we have decided, or we saw the need, to outline them a bit more in detail in this guidance. So here, I would like also to use the chance to ask you to please flag as part of your comments in the public consultation, whether any of the outlined expectations would lead to material changes in the current internal approach to risk management. And the more specific you are in your comments, the better, obviously. So now, going through the expectations. First and foremost, we are in the view that excessive leverage levels have proven to be risky and raise supervisor concerns across most industries over the cycle. So in this context, while we might not have necessarily seen evidence of excessive high leverage in the market right now, we would expect banks to have detailed risk appetite statements which outline acceptable leverage levels, which would be in line with the overall risk appetite of the institution. So additionally, on the more quantitative side, the thematic review identified a few cases of weak underwriting quality, especially linked to covenant structures, which also find their way in the industry more and more, as we have seen, but also linked to the assessment of syndication and also refinancing risk. And then here, we consider it appropriate to outline an expectation that deals with the amount of leverage. And essentially, the expectation is that banks consider financing a borrower with a leverage which exceeds six times debt to EBITDA only if this is approved and reviewed by senior management as well. So here, we have essentially received some questions around this expectation. So maybe it makes sense to elaborate just a little bit further at this stage. It must be clear here also, as Patrick said in the beginning, that we are not setting a non-pass threshold or any limit which says that deals above six times should not be underwritten. Instead, we are setting an expectation for more stringent risk management. And deals with excessive leverage should essentially be reviewed and approved by senior management of the bank as well. And lastly, this expectation applies to all forms of syndication, which means both to underwriting but also to club deals. I would give the floor to Jan.
Thanks, Ivan. The next two items on page nine will tackle both aspects concerning failed syndications and, secondly, the repayment capacity expectations we are outlining in our guidance. So let's start with failed syndications. As part of the thematic review, we identified that in adverse market conditions, the potential for banks to generate significant losses in underwritten exposures is existent and is a potential risk. At the same time, we've identified that the risk function should be actively involved in the syndication process, both in terms of monitoring and to limit and potential over reliance of a syndication function. Secondly, and that's the third bullet you see on the left, we raising expectations in terms of senior management involvement in both the approval of a risk appetite and a strategy, but also in terms of an overall monitoring framework underlying failed syndications. The whole thing translates, and that's what you see on the right, into two broad expectations, one being on a quantitative side, and the other part being more on a qualitative risk management side. In terms of failed syndications, the current draft ECB guidance clearly outlines a, what we identified as part of the thematic review, a best practice in terms of the number of days past deal closure in which a transaction is to be classified as failed or hung. We've identified that as being 90-day, and that's the current threshold as stated in the guidance. That's also aligned with the current threshold other supervisors have, and particularly the US, stated in their guidance. The second part, and that's the more qualitative risk management aspects of that particular expectation center around the involvement of senior management within the process, both in detailing a clear de-risking strategy and also detailing the procedures in place to manage distribution failures, which then again, on the right side, links in with the policies we expect to be in place in terms of the classification of exposures in the pipeline or in excess, in terms of classification to regulatory banking and regulatory trading book. So in terms of key takeaways from that, the risk function, as we speak, is expected to be more actively involved in the syndication monitoring of underwriting. On the second part, and that's the bottom part you see on the repayment capacity, what we've identified as part of the thematic review has been, and as previously highlighted, more liberal structures in terms of amortization profiles, which also, and that's the second point you see, have led to an implicit refinancing assumption in these structures. The ability in these structures to service debt is in most case given, questioning the ability, however, of the borrower to ultimately repay the entire debt over a reasonable period of time. We aim at addressing both points in our current draft of the ECB guidance. We call it repayment capacity. And we are expecting banks to have realistic assumptions, both in their cash flow forecasts, but also in the determining whether the borrower is able to, within a reasonable time, deleverage to a sustainable level. And that sustainable level, as per current draft, would be a deleveraging of 50% to 50% of total debt, within a reasonable timeframe defined as five to seven years. Again, aligning this supervisor expectations to those outlined within the US guidance. I'll pass the floor to Georg to tackle the issues identified on page 10.
Yes. So on page 10, first on the credit approval process, where results of a thematic review actually indicated, you know, overreliance on front office due diligence as well as heterogeneous standards with respect to sensitivity analysis and stress testing. From this, the guidance first, of course, emphasizes the importance of strong involvement of the risk management in the credit approval process, which of course should be clearly defined in the bank's policies. And in addition, the guidance emphasizes the importance of sensitivity analysis and stress testing, being sufficiently conservative and capturing tail and market events as well as idiosyncratic events. Here, at this point, related to stress testing, we also would highlight that stress testing is not only quite important when we talk about the credit approval process, but especially also when we talk about the underwriting pipeline and also for ongoing monitoring. As you can see in the lower part of the slide, expectations in this respect would, for example, comprise an in-depth review of assumptions made during the due diligence from a macroeconomic, as again, idiosyncratic perspective, which should translate into severe but plausible stress scenarios and which, of course, should result in a material impact on the portfolio. And finally, the last point we have here on the slide is what we also would like to highlight, the expectations expressed on internal impairment test triggers. It's important that when we talk here about internal impairment test triggers, we are talking really about triggers triggering impairment tests. And these triggers are not related to the impairment test itself as criteria for impairment when in the end this is an impairment test. These impairment test triggers are aligned with the EBA and ECB NPL guidance. And the triggers which, for example, are outlined in the guidance are here, yeah, breach, of course, of material financial covenant, refinancing of a borrower at an increased leverage, or the case where the borrower's financial situation is actually worse when initially projected in the stress case during the due diligence. This is the slide here, and now I guess I can pass on to Patrick.
Thank you very much, Georg. So just to summarize, I think what we're trying to achieve here is a consistent and proportionate response to some of the features exhibited in this market that we are concerned with, in a way that complements the bank-by-bank follow-up that is being done with the teams at that moment, and also consistent with previous examples, in particular, the US guidance. So with this, I'm very happy to open the floor and take questions. Thank you.
If you could just wait for the microphone. Thanks. Hi, my name is Sarah Schmidtka. I'm working for the European Banking Federation. And together with the National Banking Associations and the banks, we've looked at this guidance. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to participate here today. And I think there are two comments I'd like to make today, which both refer to the definition. The first one would be on SMEs. Because of the very low commitment threshold of five million euros, we believe that the guidance will include many SMEs, i.e. many clients of commercial and retail banking networks and not necessarily clients of the leveraged finance market. So, and because of the fact that many of the small companies may find it difficult to provide the data and the information requested, we think they may find it more difficult to get bank finance. So I was just wondering why the ECB does not consider further conditions to exclude SMEs in particular via, let's say, a higher threshold or sales figures or a purpose test or something like that. And my second comment refers to level playing field. As the guidance only applies to significant institutions, it excludes many players in the leveraged finance market, such as shadow banks, for example. So we see a risk here that unregulated players may grow as a result, which may actually lead to more systemic risk.
Thank you very much. On the first question, so which is the question of inclusion of SMEs basically in the scope of the guidance, and I think basically, the answer would be twofold. We thought about a full exclusion of SMEs per se from the scope of the guidance, but we thought that it's very much dependent on what you define as a SME. And we thought that it would be probably better to address this through a threshold exclusion. And I understand that your comment is that the threshold exclusion is too low and could even incorporate retail clients, you mentioned. I would be happy to be a retail client with more than five million financing. But I suppose that indeed, we can very much take that comment on board and reflect upon it when finalizing the guidance. And indeed, I think this is something we can think about. We have been approaching banks on an informal basis and best effort basis to try and size up what would be the impact on the current definition as proposed in the draft guidance on their books, based on their books. And so far, we did not see a lot of movement in what we received compared to what was already in force in the bank's own definitions. We have a little bit of movement, and this is anticipated and desired, but we have a number of cases where it doesn't move that much. That being said, this is something we'll take on board for finalizing the guidance. On the second aspect, on the level playing field, I think there is different elements to the question and to the answer. The guidance indeed formally applies to banks that are directly supervised by the ECB. It doesn't mean, of course, that it will be without influence on banks that are in direct supervision by the ECB, so the so-called less significant institutions in our jargon, that remain supervised by the national competent authorities. As you know, we have also a role in trying to foster consistent supervisory practices in that field. And we will, of course, incorporate, as we do for all documents that are published by the SSM, we will, of course, strive to incorporate the content of the finalized guidance on leveraged finance into the realm of less significant institution supervision. That being said, I would expect in that field a lot of proportionality, because obviously, most of those institutions would not be big players in the field of leveraged finance. The second aspect of your question is, of course, vis a vis non-banks. And I think this is something that we are confronted with in whatever we do as bank supervisors, when we talk about financing and financial markets. We have non-banks and non-banking actors in those markets. That's a fact of life. We have to live with it. It doesn't mean that we are not preoccupied with It doesn't mean that we are not preoccupied with what banks are doing and this is what we want to influence primarily. That's my first answer. The second answer, of course, is that we are not deprived from ways of signaling our concerns when we would have broader concerns. We have a number of fora and publications for that and we will, as we do for the theme of the so-called shadow banking in general, we will, of course, not hesitate to signal trends that we would find concerning for the non-banks as well in future. The third aspect is that we have noted that so far the non-bank actors are not so active in syndication and syndication is one, of course, big part of the draft guidance. And we believe that through our expectations on syndication practices, we will have a broader influence on the market. And finally, when non-banks would take significantly more risk than banks in a particular market, after all, maybe this is not such a bad thing for the continuing and smooth financing of this segment across the cycle.
For the questions?
Yes, thank you very much also for your presentation. My name is Lena Stock. I'm from Fitch Ratings. I have a question on the definition of total debt. Would that include instruments which, such as, for example, vendor loan, shareholder loan, PIK notes? Could you provide maybe more detail as how you define that? Thank you.
So, so far, the definition of total debt has been very taken from a high-level perspective in the guidance. So we speak about the debt in general without precising exactly what type of structure we should have in. So, I mean, that's a very interesting comment. I'm not able to get a lot of detail at this stage and give a preliminary answer on how we will treat specifically PIK notes or shareholders. So if you can maybe give that question as part of the public consultation feelings and giving, for example, you as a rating agency, how do you treat this instrument as part of your debt calculation would be very helpful. So we know that we have certain challenges, for example, in terms of debt calculation, that could be the treatment of uncapped incremental debt, but this question is also totally valid. So, and we would be keen on receiving, especially from IT agencies that do that on an ongoing basis, your current treatment. But so far, we have not strong view and deciding on exactly how we should be.
And I think we have need to refrain from being overly prescriptive on that field. We believe it's important that we see a little bit the guidance developing and see how it is implemented in practice before maybe refining from this time the field of application of the guidance when we will have very specific questions of implementation or application. I think that's probably the safe way to go at this point in time. That being said, the question is very valid.
There is one here.
Hi there. My name is Max Danzmann from Fresh Foods Bucaus Deringer. And what I haven't really understood so far when I read the guidance is how would you deal with typical acquisition finances in which there is a bitco and a target group company that has the EBITDA quite well and wouldn't cause the leverage threshold to be triggered? And the bitco doesn't have any leverage at all? Would the whole group be subject to the guidance? Or do you have to make sure that the borrower that actually utilizes the loan has the EBITDA? Or can you just, because it is actually triggered on a consolidated basis or looked at in a consolidated basis, just use the loan or utilize the loan wherever it fits the best and you don't have to worry about EBITDA thresholds and stuff like that?
So currently, I understand the question on the, at which level do we calculate the debt to EBITDA trigger? At least that's one part of your question. And the standard that we have is that you calculate the debt-to-EBITDA ratio at the consolidated level of the borrower. So for example, if you have a very wide group with very different subentities and that each subentities are asking different banks to finance, every one of them will have a debt-to-EBITDA threshold. The one that we use is the one on the holding, the one on the consolidated parent. Then I also understand the second part of your question, which pertains to whether we, what happened in a situation where the borrower is leveraged but the SPV used for the transaction is not? Is this a correct understanding?
It's like the SPV used for doesn't happen.
Maybe. I think that the first time that we have the question, but ultimately, I think it makes more sense to look at the borrower and the ultimate counterparties that benefit from the loan. But that's a preliminary answer, but I understand. It makes sense to actually look at the ultimate borrower.
So, but in a syndicated loan with several obligors, you have a lot of different entities and would you look at each single loan? Like if you have like loan amounts of altogether 200 million and there is one loan being drawn of 4 million, for instance, by one borrower and the rest of the entire loan would be utilized by others, would that one loan, because it is below the 5 million threshold, not considered to be a leveraged loan and all the others are? Like how would that play together? Or would you say, as long as there is one loan in the whole financing, syndicate financing, the entire thing becomes a leveraged transaction?
I will tackle this question a bit more globally and rephrase it in a way. Is it possible that one borrowers has at the same time some leveraged transaction and not leveraged transactions? And this is possible. So let me give you a very hypothetical example, but you have a corporate that do oil and gas transaction and that has two credit lines for financing its needs, one traditional corporate lines and one borrowing base. The borrowing base, because it's excluded from the guidance, will not be taken, will not be part of the exposure that we expect to be reported. It's secured by a specific collateral and so on. But the traditional corporate lines could be. So at the same time, it is from a theoretical perspective, we don't expect that to happen that often, but having a leveraged transaction and a non-leveraged transaction as part of more global leveraged borrowers. I think that it's a fair question and we will try to reflect that in the answer that we will give to the comments received on that part.
Thank you.
There is a third dimension of the issue of level playing field, which is the level playing field in the US market. You have mentioned the regulation of the US authorities, which inspires this regulation, but there are some differences. I want to draw the attention to two, to one, and that is the definition of EBITDA, which is unadjusted in the draft guideline, whereas it is adjusted in the US. So I would like to ask why. And in the same vein, why the definition of debt is gross, it does not exclude the cash that can be quite relevant, particularly in certain companies?
So on, this is, if we go back maybe to slide seven, this is two of the points that we flag and we are particularly interested on receiving comments as part of the public consultation. On the unadjusted EBITDA, just to give a little bit of rationale of why we went for an adjusted, knowing that indeed the US guidance allows for using the adjusted. I think the question we are having and we are very interested in getting views on this is how do we ensure consistent treatment across banks and level playing field when we would use an adjusted definition? Let me remind you that in the US, there is something called the shared national credit process, where the US agencies put together a number of supervisors on a yearly basis and go on the line-by-line analysis of major transactions. And in, as part of that review, they are sometimes led to make comments on the level of EBITDA as being reported to them by the banks, that is one, and on the level of credit quality, I understand, on those transactions. And we do not have, at least for the time being, in the SSM such a mechanism. We will look at enforcement of the guidance and the application of the guidance through regular onsite inspections, but by definitions, these are bank-specific and will not apply always at the same time for all banks that are being subject to the guidance. And the teams, the GSTs, will follow up on a regular basis, but probably not to the level of detail, going all the time on transaction by transaction basis. So that led us to conclude that in the European context, it would be probably safer from the point of view of consistent treatment of banks and maybe also from the point of view of simplicity of reporting, to use an adjusted EBITDA. I would also mention maybe quickly that we would be keen in understanding what is the general direction of adjustments. I would imagine that it tends to go to lower EBITDA rather than higher EBITDA on average, which I can understand. So we thought that all in all, it would be more practical and more consistent again in the way we deal with banks to go for unadjusted. I want to make it clear again, the two metrics we use, the four times and six times EBITDA are exactly equivalent to what is in the US guidance. So it's just the definition, of course, of adjusted, non-adjusted. And the sixth time is not, does not mean prohibition. It's important to note, we just want to make sure that senior management and the highest level of credit analysis in banks is aware of the risks that are being taken in that field and are making sure that this is consistent with risk appetite as set by the governance of the banks. This is what we want to make sure of. So we thought that it would not be such an issue. We have, since the launch of the public consultation, we came to understanding that it was a little bit of a pressure point, so we are happy to receive comments and suggestions in that respect. Again, it would be very much appreciated to understand in which way you going for an adjusted EBITDA would ensure consistent treatment of banks. That's something that, as you know, is important to us. We nevertheless understand that that may cause some reporting difficulties if banks would have to report the same transaction to the US on an adjusted basis and to us on an unadjusted basis. So that's something we are happy to discuss and dig further in, but again, to explain you the rationale. And we will, we are happy to receive reasoned comments in that respect. The second one is the total debt definition and the netting with cash. Our understanding is that the US definition is using a non-nated metric, but we are happy to be contradicted on this and if we receive specific comments in that respect, we will look at them. I would just point to the fact that calculated at inception, calculating at inception, an EBITDA metric net of cash might be slightly optimistic or misleading in times of crisis, of course, because the cash may have vanished at that time. So maybe it makes more sense to calculate growth of cash.
In the middle.
Pascal Ernst from Unicredit Group. So my question would be, is the overarching aim of this guidance to identify and monitor a high-risk portfolio? And if so, should investment grade companies be excluded because per definition and by our basis of other criteria, they are low risk?
So I understand your question on whether we could have on top of the definition, a kind of rating trigger that would say, investment grade are out of the scope of leveraged transaction and non-investment grade would still be part of a leveraged transaction? I mean...
Exactly, because for example, we have very often, we have utilities, which is very, very stable, regulation is very, very stable, and they always have a leverage of four times or above, so it's, and they are investment grade companies. And there are of course other factors which can be taken into consideration rather than only leverage.
Okay. So I would treat the question of utilities in the second part of my question, but we made the choice at the beginning to not rely on a rating trigger because it's also, it's also consistent with what the US does actually in their guidance and not relying on a rating trigger to define what it's in, what it's out. That being said, we would expect some kind of alignment between, in most of the case, between the rating and the fact that the borrower is indebted more than four times, so meaning that we would expect that the major share of what we capture is actually non-investment grade. And when it comes to specific example of, you mentioned utilities, but it could be other stuff, of exposure that deserve exclusion because their rating or the collateral that they have have a better quality, we would be keen on receiving exactly a detailed reasoning on why this should be excluded. Is it something different in terms of risk? Is it something? I'm sure that the rating agencies use some criteria to make them investment grade despite of their high leverage. So we're happy to understand on a very granular details type of activity that you deem needs to be excluded, but so far that we didn't use a rating trigger and also as part of our objective to be consistent with the US.
Maybe just, yeah, to reinforce that point, I think this is typically a case where we could have introduced a rating trigger, but we sought to be consistent with the US definition precisely for, in liaison with the previous question. So this is something we could consider. Again, we're not sure it would be a big mover in terms of what would be captured as part of the definition or not, probably with the exception of utilities. of the definition or not, probably with the exception of utilities. And we are happy again to receive detailed reasoning on which ground we could exclude utilities, maybe because the cash flow profile is dependent on long-term contracts that have some sort of security, just hinting at a possible exclusion mechanism. So yeah, comments welcome on that part.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Niklas Leibek, I come from Albersen Masaal. In your presentation, you mentioned that all the transactions that exceed the six times debt threshold should involve separate or specific senior management involvement. And in the draft guidance, you said that those transactions should be exceptional and specifically justified. Now my question would be, do you have a specific expectation or some kind of a catalog that you would like to see as justifications for those exceptions? Or is this something that should develop over time?
No, we don't have an exente catalog of expectations or the kind of box-ticking template that you should fill in on a transaction by transaction basis. We believe that it's best left to the way banks organize their risk management. And again, what we want to achieve with this is making sure that there is a clear understanding of the type and quantum of risk being taken in those specific transactions, because we believe that they go into a territory that is much riskier than other, more traditional, let's call them that, transactions and that it is important that there is full awareness at the highest level of credit approval in the banks. How this is done and how this is implemented, we think it better to leave it to the banks for the time being. And of course, over time, we may see practices developing that we will consider to be best practices and we may complement over time, but I think for the time being, it would not be completely reasonable to go with very deep prescriptions on that respect. Of course, depending on the volumes associated, that might, and depending on the existing organization of banks, that might involve a number of steps and we believe it's, it should be fully embedded into the risk management structure of the banks rather than something a bit artificial that is being done just for the supervisor. That's far from being the objective.
Hi, Alessandro Calaccia Goldman Sachs. Two questions on something you mentioned earlier. I understand that the six times leverage threshold is not intended to be a bright line for prohibiting transactions. What about the cash flow test? I mean, there's an expectation of minimum cash flow projections. And the second question is, how do you think about, how do you think about borrowers who find themselves today in a situation where they have too much debt relative to their projected cash flows? And how do you think about allowing these borrower access to credit for refinancing or for maturity extension? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, very interesting question. So the cash flow tests, we don't see it as a bright line either. We see it as a trigger for considering whether there is a need to consider that a transaction should be impaired and should be considered as being in default. But I'm not sure that that could be regarded as a bright line, so as a kind of automatic recognition, default recognition or automatic impairment trigger. We are fully aware, of course, that there are other factors to consider. It is like projection of future cash flows, what are the trends in the business model of the corporates and what are the trends in the economic environment, et cetera. So there are probably a number of other elements to take into account. That being said, of course, that when we will have our onsite teams going to the banks, I would expect that this is one of the first things they ask for when they would look at leveraged finance. And they will probably just ask for the number of transactions being in that category and look at how banks have assessed the need for default recognition or impairment. But again, this will not be a bright line.
Hello, my name is Julian Tsai from Linklater. Are the guidelines supposed to only capture loans or also other debt instruments? I think at some place within the guidelines, you mentioned bonds as well.
The answer is quite simple, that's loans only. We're not capturing high bonds or derivative as part of the scope that used for defining what is in or what is out of the guidance. So it's loans. It could be warehouse loans, for example, but that's only loans. At some point, we do mention high bonds and it comes with the fact that, we said that the guidance is valid for loans, but some expectation could be useful for other type of, type of instruments. So for example, what we say on syndication and in terms of due diligence could be true for bonds as well. So the bonds are not meant to be captured as part of the transaction. Most of the expectation applies only to loans and therefore should not be reported as part of the exposure captured.
Not either, not either. Maybe one point to complement. We are of course aware that there might be over time substitution effects. So we will, because we understand that loans tend to exhibit more and more some of the characteristics of bonds. And so this is something we will be interested in monitoring going further. So we will also look at bond issuances and investments by banks and warehousing pipelines, et cetera, and see how both markets are developing over time.
If there are no more questions, we'd like to thank you very much for your interest, for asking a lot of questions and wish you a nice weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And again, we are hoping that we get contributions that will help us in finalizing the guidance. Thank you.